Education meeting to order, please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Is there any member of the department that would like to speak? Assistant superintendent's report.
Assistant superintendent's report.
Assistant superintendent's report.
Welcome, Happy Summer. Happy to give some updates about our transition plan across the district. Happened to go to all the buildings this morning and pleased to see a lot of painting, a lot of carpeting, a lot of new furniture coming in and just general cleaning and freshening of all the buildings. The playground in the back of Brown School is going in and I have a couple of quick pictures for board members that they'd like to see. So that's moving ahead, everything's on schedule. Yeah, it's really terrific. The student workers are working hard, the custodians are doing a fantastic job. Phil McMenon has worked very closely with all the movers and the movers have completed moving all items to appropriate schools. Libraries are still in a bit of a transition, but that takes a while, there's a lot of books, a lot of very articles, so. William Myers Company was our mover and they did a terrific job, so we are right on target. In addition, we have nine students who are now in Peru with Josh Young. They're doing a service learning project, so we're really excited about that. That was approved by the board and I'm really anxious to hear about their experience. That's pretty much the updates on the district reconfiguration.
Gail, did the two teachers who were going to go, were the two teachers who were going to go to Cuba able to go?
They were able to go to Cuba. Hi, Happy.
Hi.
Hi, Happy, we're in session. The two teachers did go to Cuba and they're happy to give an update to the board about their experiences, but they were in for curriculum writing actually, doing some work this summer and they said it was much better than they anticipated.
I saw Sarah at the surf club and she can't wait to, she has a movie she told us she wanted to show us. So it sounds, or not Sarah, Mia.
Mia.
Yeah. So we'll have her go. Overview of CTE and science curriculum.
I am so pleased to welcome tonight Dan Grenier and Sarah Sandora. Come on up front. Dan and Sarah have been the diligent curricular leads for a two-year period, transforming our K through 12 curriculum in both science and CTE. Just for the board's background and the community's background, curriculum is many times, you know, part of state adopted change in standards, which is the case for both disciplines, most disciplines that we've had. They're either state adoptions or national standards. And along with those standards usually come a significant change in instructional approach, which is definitely the case in science. So there's professional development that goes hand in hand with the writing of curriculum. So the approach matches the standards put out by the state. So Sarah and Dan have become quite expert in their content areas. They've given ongoing updates to the curriculum council, which we have several members here tonight. So some of this will be reviewed for those members of the curriculum council, but in your packets, in your board packets, you will see overviews of all of the areas that we are moving to adoption tonight. And I also put in between each board member's seats, an example of what a unit looks like. So there are one unit there for manufacturing and another unit there for human impact on environmental science. And just to give you an idea of how many units go along with curriculum, those are one-unit examples. In science, we have moved in the two-year period of 115 total units for adoption. And in CTE, there's 80 units. So when you look at those packets, multiply, multiply, multiply. And that reflects on the work that we've done across the district. So I'm going to introduce Dan Grenier first and Dan, if you want me to be your vanna.
Sure, that would be great.
Welcome. Thank you. Fearless leader.
Thank you for letting me come and speak to all of you about the great work we've done in CTE. I do want to start that this journey has been great for not just me, but for all the members of our department. Just going through the process of reimagining and taking a really deep reflective look at all the work we've done has been very beneficial. So in that sense, it's definitely a bonus. This chart here, apologize for the small text, but just wanted to quickly show how our courses have aligned with our 21st century capacities. The capacities are on the far left and all the courses, which Gail mentioned encompasses 80 units. So all the Xs throughout the charts, you can see which courses hit which capacities. And through our curricular work, we, Sarah and I, really wanted to hit upon a lot of the capacities. And as I mentioned to the curriculum meeting a couple of weeks ago, several weeks now, we really hit a lot on the critical thinking and the creative thinking. So I thought it was important to share a little bit about what our curriculum represents now. Represents the integration of rigorous classroom instruction along with relevant work-based experiences. It helps guide our students in their decisions for most secondary choices and options. Offers challenging, engaging, effective, and relevant learning experiences that includes not just the technical knowledge and skills, but also the application of those needed to succeed in the real world. And how we did that is we were able to create five of the 16 federally recognized career pathways, which allowed us to give or offer our students opportunities to a variety of different aspects within different careers. And then obviously the full integration of our 21st century capacity into all of our learning. So one of the units that Gail mentioned is our computer integrated manufacturing units. And I don't recall which one of these, I think it might be unit four.
Yep, unit four.
Yes, thank you. So I chose this course really to show who we are because of the growth we've done through our department. This is a brand-new course within the engineering and technology pathway and we really had no representation of manufacturing. And along with the integration of technology and within our department, we received a Perkins grant and as part of that grant, we need to have an advisory board. So we've been working with a lot of businesses within the area regarding manufacturing and a lot of the concepts that we implemented here have continuously come up. So we took advantage of the writing process to develop this course. So the unit you're seeing, we're presenting them with a challenge where they have to design a device that will serve as a kiosk in cleaning off your cellphone. If Gail goes to the next slide, there's a great little graphic regarding the amount of germs living on all of our cellphones. So throughout the whole course, there's going to be three modules where they're going to learn a variety of techniques, 3D scanning, which is the upper left, robotics and automation, which is an example of the lower left, and then some CNC, which is computer numerical control manufacturing, which is the image in the upper left. So they're going to take all of those items and develop this automated system in where you just plop your phone in and the robots will pick up the phone, pick up the cleaner, the disinfectant, wipe it dry, and move the phone off to the next person.
Found a never-ending port soon.
And these are the 21 courses that we worked on this year that are ready for you for adoption and definitely ready for our students next year.
It's grade four new for CTE?
What's that?
It's a new.
Grade four is part of the new Brown model where all students in grade four will now have access to that.
All of them, it's down the left.
All of them, yeah. Yep, so that's an exciting addition. Any questions for Dan?
No, I'd be happy to try that phone cleaning.
Well, we'll invite you as you come down.
Right, that's how I feel after all these curriculums, I want to go back to the models.
And science, introducing Sarah.
Thank you, you can just go ahead to the next slide. As Gail mentioned, we needed to incorporate the new next-generation science standards that were recently adopted by the state of Connecticut. Fortunately, these new standards align beautifully with the district's vision and the 21st century capacities. As you can see, we hit all of the capacities in our 115 units that we developed. A few of the highlights, Gail, if you have the next please. Most of the K through eight courses went through and were adopted last year, but we still had kindergarten, third, and eighth to tackle this year. And I wanted to talk a little bit about some of the things that we worked through K through 12. We wanted to increase the authenticity of the student's science experience, the relevancy, the skills that students have, graphing, data analysis, and really justifying their claims with evidence-based statements. So those are a few of the things that really are infused K through 12 in the science curriculum. Some examples of that here, in kindergarten, the upper right-hand corner, you see that little Oscar the Grouch. This is something that I love. This was made by Bethany Taylor at Jeffrey, we'll be going to Drivson, but it's something that all kindergarten students experienced this year. Starting with the beginning of the year, they participated in the Creola Color Cycle Program, which takes used markers, of which, you know, elementary schools have plenty, and turns them and sends them back to Creola and it turns them into renewable energy. So what I loved about this is it's something that was really authentic for the students to participate in and it went throughout the whole year and their final unit was our environment, which had a strong emphasis on reuse, reduce, recycle. And so they got to experience this authentic recycling program and then really wrapped it up in their final unit. In grade three, this picture of this girl, what's happening here is the students performed an experiment with rocks and they identified the properties of rocks based on some chemical tests. And then we gave them an unknown sample and performed some of the tests and they needed to use their data from their experiment on their rocks to justify their conclusion about what type of rock was the unknown. And that really illustrates a lot of what we're trying to get students to do with their science education. Finally, in grade eight, in the lower right-hand corner, this was associated with the waves unit and what students were doing was they learned about light and sound waves, but then they needed to apply it to how these waves are actually used in a modern medical technology. So they're really seeing the relevancy in their lives and outside of their eighth-grade classroom. Go to the next slide, please. That could do something.
Now I'm just stepping up.
The biggest change this year was the high school science. We tackled the majority of these courses this year and even the science sequence has changed. So in prior years, students would come into ninth grade taking either integrated science or honors biology. Beginning with next year's freshmen, all students are coming in and taking biology, whether it's honors bio or two-trimester biology, which also allows them to take three new elective classes. So as you can see, we still have the standard courses, we still have a biology and a chemistry and a physics, but we've involved a lot of new electives that really allowed us to have students have these authentic experiences. And Gail, if you can go to the next one, please. So here's a list of the new electives that we have. And as you can see, they're many and diverse. Students can really have the ability to explore topics of science in which they're interested. So on the bottom here, you see a student working the biotechnology course. This course uses the same exact protocols and lab equipment that actual biotechnicians would use in a career. It allows them to extract, amplify, and analyze DNA, including their own, if they so choose, which is really an amazing thing for high schoolers to be able to do. The other picture that you can see there is related to the environmental science course, of which you have unit two for. What I love about this course is it really engages our students as citizen scientists. We obtained these sensors called Pocket Lab Air. And what students will be doing in this unit in particular is they can plan and conduct their own environmental air quality experiment and they can decide do I want to go test something, you know, the difference in the carbon dioxide concentration during, let's say, a basketball game versus when it's empty and how does that change and what are those implications? Do you want to test the air quality in Rockland versus down at the surf club and see if there's any differences there? And you can see, it's cut off a little, but you can even attach it to a balloon or a kite and see how the air particulates vary close to the surface and higher up in the atmosphere. So it's a really great tool for students to get out there and do science. Something else that I'm really excited about is the marine science course, which is an interdisciplinary course with CTE. And in this, for the first time this year, students raise trout from eggs in a tank in hand and then release them into the Hammond asset river. And we've also partnered with one of the town engineers and our students are now going to test various waterways in Madison and analyze the results and send them officially to the state of Connecticut. So as you can see, we're really emphasizing students doing science rather than sitting in their classrooms and taking notes and just learning it from teachers telling them about it. So we're very excited, we feel that we have a very strong curriculum and our students will have some great opportunities moving forward. So thank you for the chance to work on this curriculum for the past couple of years.
I wanted to just share in, pointing out that Sarah's included in her overviews that you will see posted on the website, thanks to the different agencies and individuals locally who contributed to the development of this unit. So that was a new addition to our overviews this year.
Can you just talk about the next-generation science standards and how that affected your...
Is it your question?
That's a great question. It's a significant shift.
It was a significant shift. Yes, so the next-gen science standards have performance expectations, an emphasis on engineering, and what's called three-dimensional learning. So it was, as was mentioned, a major shift, but fortunately, Gail arranged for the Mandel Academy through the Connecticut Science Center to come and give training. So during some PD days, even before I got here in May of 2017, the teachers started the one-day professional development opportunities through this academy. And then in June of 2017, we had a week-long institute that really helped the teachers to understand what the shifts were. And really a big part of that is inquiry. So students will experience in most unit, an anchoring phenomenon, so something that really makes them question. And throughout the unit, students will learn science by doing and they'll start to dissect the different science components that actually are playing into that phenomenon. And so they learn how it's happening using the scientific concepts as they sort of break it down and experiment.
And that doing piece, is that part of the next gen or is that Madison-specific or both?
Both, that's one of those beautiful things that I said just aligned so perfectly. Yeah, it's really exciting.
Interesting on the state website, when they come out with new standards, they sometimes will go as a crosswalk so you can see where the similarities and differences are between the old standards and new standards. And the impact of the standards in terms of concepts with matches, they have moderate matches, they have strong matches, and they have no matches, or concepts with no significant matches. And in particular, you know, K through eight, you could make a strong case for a lot more matches or some minimal matches. In the high school, it was actually most of the concepts from the old standards to the new standards had minimal or no matches. So it was a significant shift in the high school. And the chart that I'm looking at, that's right off of the state's website, 49% for nine through 12 had no or minimal matches in high school. And let's see, another, my eyes are really going, like 24% had moderate matches in the high school. So the amount of shifting and work done to meet the new standards in the high school level was significant as well as the approach. We were testing, our students, state tests went out this year for the first time with science included. So we have yet to get those results, but they are testing against the new standards. So hopefully our adoption wasn't complete until this year, but next year, our adoption will be 100% with your approval of the units tonight.
How, what grade was the science in high school?
The science was grade 11, right? Unfortunately, right, to test. Reading your mind, but it's like, yeah.
And then the, sorry, do you... I know all the other curriculums are on the web, once adopted, these will go up too.
They do, actually Ching is lining them up, she goes to China tomorrow, but undaunted. She made sure that they were ready in due time. She was here until like 30 minutes ago, like almost at. Yeah, our curriculum runs, right. Once adopted, we always post our curriculum on the website. Not only the overviews, but we post all of the standards associated in what we call stage one, all of the outcomes. So that's available for anybody to look at and we actually get a lot of inquiries.
And every unit is on there?
Every unit, every discipline.
It's kind of cool for parents to be able to...
Yeah, our intent is that learning outcomes should be transparent and standards that students are being held accountable should be transparent as well, so.
And the curriculum committee went through all this thoroughly?
Yeah, the curriculum committee had, I don't know, probably three rounds this year. I'm trying to think of how many presentations you guys did this year and probably another two or three last year. And in addition to that, our curriculum process has a vetting mechanism as well. So we actually have outside readers, one within the discipline from another grade level and one from outside the discipline, and they team in twos and they look at all of the design standards that are also posted on the website. That includes standards, includes outcomes, includes content. And they give feedback back to both Sarah and Dan to follow back with teams, make corrections as needed, make sure alignments are tight and everything's coded.
With the state.
With the state standards.
Yep.
Are you trying to test my hearing?
Sorry.
Couple of questions. At the high school level, we have the trimester model. Do you feel like there would be enough time to get all the standards in and to have the, all the standards covered in effect if we didn't have a trimester model?
I think we're the, and you guys can jump in, you know, I certainly would value how you guys respond to this. I think the trimester model actually allows us to do more with choice and standards. Many times the standards are varied and there's so much to cover within a course that if you don't have course-specific design where students can choose a deep dive into marine science, you may not get the marine science standards associated with it or as deep. I'm trying to think of some of the other courses that you developed. Biotech, there's another example. So as kids develop kind of aspirations of careers, I think they have a better chance at going deeper into the standards that they care about. We still have general classes too that everybody takes, like Sarah was explaining, there's biology or there's honors bio. But in the past, we only had honors bio or we had integrated math, which was pretty, or integrated science, which was a smattering of everything for your biology kid. So that really narrowed down perspectives and offerings. Do you want to add anything to that? What do you think the trimester?
I agree with the trimester allows for so many more electives. I've worked in schools before where you have year-long or even sometimes semester-long electives, but it really doesn't allow many opportunities. Because when you have the trimester, there's really, you can take three different electives in one year in science and that really has opened up a lot of opportunities for our students, absolutely.
I will say that biotech, I looked at the material last night and the biotech course, my daughter is majoring in biotech in college and, you know, the stuff that is called, like the things that they're doing with the coursework, like they're really college-level and career-level.
Yeah.
It's amazing. Another question that I had is, I know that standards are making education more regulated and we have to have somewhat of a regimented curriculum program to meet that and to refresh our curriculum. Do you feel, both of you, that there's enough opportunity for input from the classroom teachers in the curriculum? And how is that carried forward to the curriculum development process?
The teachers, and I think I'm speaking to both of us, but the teachers are very much involved with the curriculum. Whenever we worked on units or a course, the teachers were right there. So a lot of times, sometimes I would do the outline and teachers would come in and figure out what they needed out of the course, what their expectations were, but they were involved in every step of the process really, so they had a lot of input. Do you feel the same?
Definitely. The teachers in the process, you know, early on, I had mentioned we'd gone through a reflective process. So early on, they were in that process from the beginning. And obviously you can't hit all of the standards. So during that process, you have to prioritize, prioritize, excuse me, and determine which standards are important based on that course and the sequence within our taste of that way.
Thank you.
It'll be interesting to hear the feedback from the new ninth grade model too, so come back.
It'll be really fun, yeah. I just wanted to add that since we've been engaged in curriculum writing, starting in 2014, which I think Kitty and Seth were the only two around the table, 681 units have been adopted. Through those cycles, through that same process. I'd be remiss if I didn't also mention that grade nine literature and writing is also up for adoption. And this was one of the courses that was initially developed back at the beginning of curriculum writing. So it goes back right in the beginning. If we kept on our cycles and we didn't have to make adjustments due to budget impacts, we actually would be doing a refresh on ELA and all math in the upcoming year. So that was our first deep dive into curriculum writing. The teachers had no experience really with writing in this particular model before they go into a cycle. So when Sarah and Dan start with teachers, even though we've been writing this way since 2014, teachers in their discipline have never written this way. So in 2014, our ELA and math courses had no experience writing to this level of development of curriculum. And one of the strongholds of doing it this way and having board adoption is that we are guaranteeing similar courses and similar experience for students who are enrolled in our schools. So it's an equity issue as much as anything. So the course shifts in grade nine literature and writing actually came about in a few different pieces. There was a recognition that our freshman students needed more work on developing areas in writing, in particular, looking at not only literary essay, but looking at more narrative and preparation for college essays. Also looking at MLA formats, grammar, phrases, clauses, along with the reading skills of analyzing theme, symbolism, characterization, and motif. So they really remade these courses for their freshman students. And you're going to be seeing, there's going to be a lot more ELA adoptions because we are really going back into our existing units and embedding more with grammar, phrases, and phonics. As we've looked at student work and looked at some of our progress, that's one of the additions that we wanted to make. We actually went and did standalone units for K through four and coaches were coaching into that and the feedback was we need to embed them into units. So curriculum committee will be seeing more of that, but grade nine is ready to go and vetted. And you will be able to see the overviews on those as well. Any questions about any of the curriculum?
The college essay piece, what grade do you see?
Sophomore.
Sophomore, so but that will get revisited junior and then hopefully senior?
Yeah, yeah. You actually are getting the foundation more in freshman though. Because we weren't doing enough writing and writing from not only, we were doing a lot of five-paragraph essay writing, we weren't doing a lot of personal essays. We weren't doing a lot of personal essay development, which is what the college essay is.
Okay.
So we're starting to build the foundation earlier. But it also allows for all the reading too.
Thank you both very much.
Yeah, thank you. Happy summer.
I owe them, I owe them many summers of their lives, so please. Thank you both very much. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Curriculum heroes. Enjoy your summers.
Thank you.
Board member permits.
Just that, I feel like, yeah, just I feel at home now because I was going through Wendy withdrawal, because we hadn't, hadn't seen her, you know, since the Wednesday meetings stopped and so.
Turn around to Wendy.
Don't put the camera.
Please. Thank you for being here, Wendy. We're happy to have you.
Thank you.
And in charge.
Yes. Make no mistake. Okay, so moving into committee reports. Curriculum and student development.
Curriculum and student development, we spent a fair amount of time with Sarah and Dan at our last meeting. They took us through a somewhat more in-depth presentation of the material that you all saw this evening. Gail also presented on the, the assessment program that is currently in place. Progress report for the Madison Public Schools, which you have a copy in your materials and a report.
Thank you. Communications, no report. Facilities.
The facilities committee met on Monday, July eighth. It was one of our added meetings over the summer. The committee discussed how we tackle, how to tackle the reconfiguring the five-year CIP plan in light of the committee's vote the previous meeting to move forward with the four-school model recommendation. Although, we don't know which four-school model we're going to select yet. That remains to be determined. Some of the deliberations going forward will rely on the recommended sequencing of projects for each school that could potentially remain in service, as well as the proposed use of each remaining school in terms of grade distribution. So the committee was advised by Colliers that no matter which four-school format the committee proposes, they're all close enough that they're, and they all rely on any potential construction or renovation models that will allow us ample swing space and timing to accomplish construction and/or renovation without requiring a double transition for the students. And the committee agreed to receive additional information and recommendations from facilities director Bill McMinn and our consultant, Colliers International, at our next meeting. The committee then voted to remove the July twenty-second meeting from the schedule due to vacation and travel schedules that would result in the lack of a quorum to conduct committee business. So we pulled that one off of the calendar. Our next meeting is August fifth at seven PM in this room, Hammond Asset Room. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Finance committee.
We have not yet.
Personnel committee. Tom's not here. Personnel committee is.
Just ongoing May negotiations.
Great, thank you. Policy committee. Greg is not here, and I don't believe that you guys have not.
No, I think we're meeting next week.
Okay, Learn liaison, I went to the meeting in June. And they have a new executive director at Learn, Kate Erickson. A new CFO, Michael Beldon. And just for the board to be aware, we're starting a new cycle rotating. So I will get that scheduled to you and we can all divvy that up and pick a meeting to attend for the coming school year. End of report. Audience response.
Great job by these two, the curriculums were fantastic.
It's exciting, right?
My son's favorite course is marine science, so love to see that.
Awesome.
Yeah.
First doc, that's great.
Did he hear?
I see the University of Miami and his future.
He just graduated. He's done, we have a graduate.
Okay, so we're already down to the consent agenda. I need a motion, no budget expenditure. It's in the packet. It's in the packet, so I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. And, and, something up in the telephone? Happy?
Yeah.
Did you say something?
Thank you. No?
Okay.
Just waiting to say aye.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstained. Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the June fourth, twenty nineteen, Board of Education meeting.
So moved.
Violet, give them that one to you. Quiet as you are. Any discussion?
Is that here?
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Abstained, thank you.
I need to abstain. Oh, was that part of it, but not enough, so I abstain.
Got that, Wendy?
Yes.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the June eighteenth, twenty-nineteenth, Board of Education meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Same.
Abstained, that's Emily.
I think it's, I'm not sure.
Yep, I think you're right, Happy. Okay. I think that motion carries anyway, might not, am I right?
Why would that be?
No.
Because, not, yeah, so that one does, so we'll add that again, sorry.
Can we just point out that Happy, you actually were at the June eighteenth meeting?
Oh, maybe she wasn't at the June fourth.
Yeah, it was the June fourth.
So we'll do the math on that. Okay, I'll check.
We're good, Happy was there.
Thank you. She was at one, but not both.
Yeah, it was the June fourth that, that.
Okay, so action item to approve the multi-year contract between the Town of Madison, Madison Public Schools, and Tyler Technologies for the implementation of the Munis Financial HR Payroll Software System. Funding of the one-time fees associated with implementation and data conversion is included in the capital improvement program. Reoccurring annual fees of ninety-nine thousand ninety, nine hundred and ninety-six dollars will be shared between the town and school district's operating budgets. The initial term of the agreement is three years. I need a motion first. Violet? Second?
Second.
Discussion. Art is here. If there are any questions for him or if you would like another refresher on what this was?
My guess is we fall apart without this, so.
Pretty close.
And.
About eighteen months from now, twelve to eighteen months from now.
The Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen have already approved us.
Yes.
And it was in CIP, which was also a crisis, this is really.
What's that?
We couldn't give him another four bucks.
I know, right?
I know.
I really wanted it under a hundred thousand.
Says the finance chair.
I really wanted it under a hundred thousand.
It's like when they tell you to price your house at like five hundred ninety-nine thousand.
That would still only give us nine hundred ninety-nine, don't you want one more?
You're not five bucks?
You want a five, not four.
Is that, is that the end of the discussion?
Yeah, it's nine ninety-six. So that will make it.
It's summer, Violet, you're, you're.
So I, I would point out.
It's a summer slide.
Yeah, I would point out that at the last meeting on June eighteenth, Art gave us a really good rundown of why we need a new system. The current system is no longer supported. And it was, it came off of support faster than we assumed it would. We were notified of the end of support for June thirtieth, twenty twenty. So we only have this fiscal year left with support for the existing system. And the project is at least a twelve to eighteen-month conversion, data conversion implementation process.
So wait, does it actually go live?
Well, that all depends on how soonly the data conversion implementation goes. It certainly can.
It's not a. Looks like it's kind of a beach hunt.
Literally, to manage, to manage your expectations, I want to make it very clear that it will not be sooner than probably twelve months.
Gotcha.
And it will take most of that time to truly, and we will implement it in, in its components, most likely starting with the financial HR piece or financial piece, followed by the HR payroll kind of simultaneously with each other. And we want to be able to run in parallel with our existing system for a short period of time and, you know, be confident.
And can you remind, remind us again, Art, what was the procurement method used for this?
This, we, we have authorization through the Board of Selectmen to participate in the Sourcewell Consortium, which is, I believe it was the state of Minnesota started it and its name had changed at one point. But we joined it, it is a consortium purchase that we recognize as if we would, as we would recognize like a state master agreement. So it has been competitively bid through this consortium group. And there's contract-trip pricing, which involves percentage discounts off of their listed pricing. This is a software-as-a-service model, so it's a cloud-based system. And we, you know, we believe that it's our best option, especially the way we're configured with a shared financial system, a shared financial department. There's very few, if any, other than this product that can handle with a single instance of the program, one database to handle both the school district and the town side. So it's amazing how a twenty-seven-year-old product was able to manage something like that. But, you know, this, this is, I think I, I shared the, the market share that this company has in Connecticut is tremendous. They have about ninety-five implementations in Connecticut alone. They have fifteen or sixteen hundred nationwide. All they do are municipal boards of education, public entities. So it is a specialty niche and I'm not giving you any illusions. This will not be a simple or easy conversion. It's, it's going to be a good challenge.
Is Power School phasing out?
Power School currently owns the Phoenix system. So they have discontinued.
How?
Power, Power School is not going away. Power School is known as a very large student information system. We do not have Power School as our student information system. We use Infinite Campus, which is also a very large competitor to Power School. Power School purchased the Phoenix system from, Sun Guard owned it, Pentimation HTE. It's been owned by a number of different entities and different corporate configurations. But it started out as a very small company in Connecticut. And ultimately, it's that one product that's being phased out. And they do offer a competitive product that we did look at and move out, actually.
Thank you, Art.
Sure.
I have a question. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, abstained, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you, Art, good luck.
See you soon, thanks for being here.
Do what I promised Ching I would do.
Oh, I can do it.
Thank you for being here, all with us too.
That's what she did.
I need a motion to approve, to, to approve the adoption of the instructional leader growth profile.
I can give some context to that.
That's a motion and second, and then we'll do that in discussion.
Did this come from the curriculum committee?
Yes.
Then it doesn't need a second.
Okay.
So I'll move to adopt it.
Okay, discussion.
So last year, we brought an addendum to the teacher evaluation plan. That was the teacher growth profile. The instructional leader growth profile is for those individuals who act as teacher leaders in the district. So coordinators, coaches, people who lead curriculum work. And it was the result of a year-long, several years of professional development from research for better teaching around solid, research-based practices for delivering and planning instruction. So they wanted their growth profile to show the same learning that was evident in the teacher growth profile, right around using research-based strategies and instructional practices by modeling, coaching, providing workshops, or resources to improve the learning for all students. These are all those designs. So really, domain two and three were the main adjustments.
And, and this is part of their evaluation tool?
Part of their evaluation tool, it also goes through our PDAC committee, which is our state-mandated committee. It's made up of teachers and administrators. And any changes to any evaluation tool goes through that committee first. And it also went to curriculum.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Abstained? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the CTE curriculum.
And it doesn't require a second.
Doesn't need a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstained? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the science curriculum.
I will proudly move that.
No second, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained, motion carries, sorry, sir. I need a motion to approve grade nine ELA curriculum.
So moved.
Second? No second, necessary, sorry. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty salary addenda to the superintendent, assistant superintendent, and director of special education's respective contracts.
So moved.
I need a second. Discussion?
One more second, I got a, a text from Alan that he was going to be here at twenty after, and it's like two minutes away. Well, he's not here, all right, no discussion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Abstained? Motion carries. Any old business? Future agenda items? Meetings and dates of appointment of a.
I have a question about future agenda.
Yes, please.
Can we put this letter that came in our board's ed email on an agenda item?
Yeah, so I believe the curriculum committee is going to be just kind of going through that since most of it was curriculum, but certainly we can. Yeah, it's there, it will, it warrants further discussion.
I think on a future board meeting, agenda items, it will be the results of the survey from the parent survey, parent satisfaction survey that has just come in like a day ago, as well as.
We have our results from alumni.
Survey.
And I know they're building that will go out next year, the exit interviews.
Yep.
So that will be an opportunity for the board to add some questions that we would like to get some answers to, to, related to, to that letter as well. So there definitely will be more to come.
They'll be placed on the agenda for next week, these items that you just.
Are the exit interviews for graduating students or for people who pull their kids out of the district?
I think it's for the grad, grads, graduating seniors, but that's a good question that we can certainly ask. Okay. And certainly contact somebody on the curriculum committee that can make sure it is discussed there, and then they will bring it to the full board.
That's a good point.
Um, any other, our future agenda items? Meetings and dates of importance are attached. I need a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye, aye, all opposed, abstained, motion carries. We are adjourned at seven twenty, it's about eight twenty.